States of America and two revolved for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'm on to it.
And four is public appearances, public opportunity to speak on any subject not specific to China. Okay. And five, discuss and consider the minutes from the Oregon Board meeting June 17th. Any corrections, additions, or motion?
I'll approve the minutes from June 17th, 2019 meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? She carries. Five of six is presentation from the House.
Good evening. I'm Eric. President of Ellers Investments Partners. Thank you for having me here tonight. All I would like to do this evening is just talk a little bit about what Ellers Investments Partners' relationship with the village and what we do. I think you've probably heard from Greg Johnson, who's your municipal advisor, also at Ellers. I am an investment advisor, and just like how Greg and his colleagues only work with local governments, we are the same thing, about where they work with you on your planning, your debt issues, your TIF districts, things like that. We just work with local governments on investing their general fund assets, bond proceeds, things of that nature. Okay? So what I would like to do for you today is just go over a little overview of the investments that we're managing for you. I believe it was in February, I came here and did this review for your staff, and so I just wanted to update that and talk about it with you. But the, so what I would like to do is talk about your investments, and as they relate to the objectives that you set out in your investment policy. And the first thing I just want to mention, the investment policy, and I think I mentioned this, Matt and Deb, when I was here, that what I have, the investment policy I have is dated 2013. Is that the most current one?
Yeah.
All right. So we recommend that you update, or at least review your investment policy, at least every three years. So our suggestion to you would be sometime in the very near future, probably before the end of the fall, just review your policy, see if you want to make any changes to it, any suggestions at all. In our review of it, I wouldn't do a lot of revisions or anything, but you might want to look at it to define your risk levels in that, and what you mean by risk, custodial risk, and credit risk, and things like that, because those are some of the things that your auditors look at when they do their, when they do their review as well. So, but as stated in the investment policy, your, the investment objectives are safety, liquidity, and yield. Safety, liquidity, and investment income, yield, basically. At the end of June, yesterday, we were managing assets of over $2.8 million, pretty close to $2.9 million. So that's the portfolio that would be managing. When we talk about safety, we're considering mainly credit risk. Okay, what's the, what, what are the risks involved? The issuers of the investments are not going to be able to pay a principal and interest when it's due. So, so we look at that and kind of break up the portfolio, what it's made of. Well over half of it of your portfolio is FDIC insured certificates of deposit. Forty percent is a government-sponsored enterprise security, mainly agency securities. And less than 1% is in cash. So because all your investments are FDIC insured, or they're backed by an agency of the United States government, you virtually have no credit risk. You know, I can guarantee that you'll never lose money because of a default, but it's highly, highly unlikely. So credit risk is, is minimal. So you're very safe in your portfolio. Liquidity is a measurement of how quickly can you turn your investments into cash. And we put a measurement on that, a number on it, by calculating the average weighted maturity of the entire portfolio. Okay, some of, some of your investments are going to come due in a few weeks, some might not come due for a couple of years. But when you average all of those things together, your average weighted maturity is a little bit over a year. So from that perspective, you're very liquid. You'll be able to turn your investments into cash very quickly to pretty much what the market value is at the moment. You won't have any problem finding buyers for your investments to turn that into cash. So you're very liquid. If that was a bigger number, that would be a little bit more difficult, and you'd be much more susceptible to market risk. But you're, you're very liquid and no problems with that. The average weighted yield maturity of your portfolio at the end of June was 1.811% after paying us our management fees. And that average weighted maturity is just taking all the prints, all the interest that you got paid, and all the interest that has accrued up to the end of June that hasn't been paid yet, put all that together, and that's your, that's your average weighted yield to maturity. Another measure is the total return, and because your investments gain or lose value depending on what interest rates happen, or what interest rates do, you take that and add that into, into the interest you earn, either add or subtract, and you come up to your total return. That was 1.723%. That's not really a big issue for you because you buy and hold everything to maturity. Okay, so it doesn't, it doesn't really impact you that you're going to go out and sell something and possibly take a loss. But it is a, it is something that your auditors look at when they put together their financial statements. We'd all like to give that number in a vacuum. We want to give you some idea of what else you could have done with your fund. One of those things is the local government investment pool, run by the state of Wisconsin. For the 12 months that ended June 30th, or May 31st, because the June number isn't out yet, at the end of May was 2.225%. Now, you're looking at that, and you're going, why, we only earned 1.8, we could have just put it in the, in the pool and earned, and earned 40 basis points more. Well, you're fixed income investors, okay? So once you buy this investment and you hold it to maturity, that's what you're going, that's what you're going to earn. So when interest rates started going up at the beginning of 2016, it took us a while to reinvest those maturities and watch that go up, and rates went up very rapidly. Now you're seeing they're starting to fall. Yield on the 10-year bond has fallen like 60 basis points, over half a percent, in just like the last two weeks. Okay? So interest rates are starting to fall, but the advantage to you there is because you have this fixed income portfolio, where you're going to see the local government investment pool start to fall rather rapidly, that won't, that decline in interest rates won't really have that big of an impact on you because you were invested a little longer out on the yield curve. Okay? So fixed income investments, when interest rates start to rise, yes, you're a little behind the yield curve. But now they've started to fall, so you're not going to be impacted as much. We like to try to do it so your, your interest income over time, your investment income over time is, is level. Okay? So you can count on that income going on and on as you go through your budget. Okay? The rest of my review is just a commentary comment on, you know, what we think might happen with interest rates and what's happened in the investment world, the charts and graphs that are in your booklet, just everything I just talked about just puts that all in graphical form. Okay? So I'm, I'm happy to entertain any questions that any of the, any of the trustees have.
I have a question for you, Ken. The last sentence under liquidity talks about the village improving the overall yield by investing in maturities of longer maturities. Is that, that's a recommendation of yours?
That, we like to try to manage our portfolios to an average weighted maturity of about three years. Now, that depends a lot on your cash flow situation, what's going on in the city as far as you're going to be bonnie for things, going to be painting cash for projects, you know, things of that. So it's more of a, a goal I would reach for, but every, every community is, is different. So the longer your average weighted maturity, because yield curves are generally upward sloping, the longer the average weighted maturity, the higher rate of return you're going to earn over time. So that's why we, we always make that recommendation, that based on your unique situation and other considerations, we try to help you manage it, not more than a three-year average weighted maturity.
And Ellers would take that into consideration because also your company is the one that helps us put together our
Exactly.
future financial plan.
Exactly.
So you would be able to provide us with a rounded?
When, when Greg comes here and he's going to be talking to you, say, about issuing a bond for a street project, he's going to come to me first and say, hey, let's talk about their investments. Do we need to do a $3 million bond for this? Or can we do it for less because you have some cash? What are the impacts if we do that? You know, those kind of things. So yes, we work, you know, both sides of the firm work very closely in that regard. Okay?
Other questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then, Ken, don't run off too fast.
Okay.
We have under new business item 8A, discuss and consider contracting with Ellers, pursue an RFP for banking services, since you're still standing there. And Deb, I don't know if we want to talk about this too?
Yes.
The RFP. So I'm switching things up.
Will you get it out of the way, or are you just wanting to sit here?
No, you go right ahead.
Okay. One of the things that Deb and I have talked about, we made a proposal, and I believe you have that in the packet, is we are not a typical investment advisor. Okay, we advise our clients on a lot of different issues, not only when it comes to investments, but a lot to do with their banking as well, and their, their cash management practices. And so Deb mentioned she wanted to do an RFP for banking services. And so that's one of the services that we provide. We have a certain expertise in this area because for about 25 years, I worked managing treasury departments for companies. So I worked with a lot of banks buying these services. And then one of my colleagues, Dawn Lawson, for nearly 30 years, worked at Wells Fargo Bank selling treasury management services. Dawn and I have known each other, you know, for almost an entire time because I was one of her clients when I was in that. So we offer this as, as a service. Okay, so if Deb and her staff were to do something like this, do the RFP, I'm going to suggest that she's going to spend at least $20 million on this. Okay, because it can be a pretty arduous process in writing, and this is what we, what we would do. We would write the RFP, you know, in conjunction with staff, send it out to the respondents, work with staff to identify the respondents, send it out to the respondents, take it back, do the analysis, narrow it down to probably two or three, depending on how many responses you get to it, narrow it down to two or three, and then making a recommendation. And then when that's all said and done, if you decide to change banks, that new bank is going to want it to go through some implementation meetings, and we would attend those as well. The other thing we would do is if you wanted to interview some respondents before you made a final, a final decision on that, we would attend those interviews as well. So it's just that we offer this service because we know it can take a lot of time to compare all these apples and oranges and the different responses that you get from the different financial institutions. Now, we typically charge $20 an hour or $200 an hour for doing consulting work like this.
Can we get this over?
I heard the 20.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I forgot this hero. I forget where the decimal point is sometimes. So $200 an hour, so if we would, you know, spend 20 hours on doing, doing something like this, that'd be a $4,000 bill. But because we're already managing assets for you, we would do that at a discounted rate for you, and not to exceed, no matter how long it took, it wouldn't exceed more than $1,500.
So we could get down to that $20.
Almost, yeah, almost. Hey, if, if we had about 50 respondents and went through everyone, oh, yeah, it'd probably come down to about $20 an hour. So I, you know, I say we just recommend we do this as, you know, to, to assist our, our community clients as well because, hey, this is something you might only do five times, you know, once every five years, or even less often than that. And I say it can be pretty, can be pretty arduous.
Does Deb have anything to add, or Matt regarding this? There's background?
I don't, yeah, Deb has a memo in the packet.
Yeah. I mean, we've been with Wisconsin Banking Trust, who's a community bank, it's changed names several times, since I started, which was 2007, and many years before that, I don't know when the relationship started. And I can't say that we've had issues, I mean, we've had some issues here and there, but I think that's kind of normal. But I do believe it's in the best interest of the village to branch out, see what else is out there, see what other services are out there and what others can provide. We are, you know, there's several things that I would like to look for in doing this is moving towards more of an electronic banking atmosphere, doing a lot more online since the utility bill is going to be moving down in the municipal services building, or is there. We're going to need more control as far as not having to move cash from one building to the other, or checks. I would also like to look at more, more, more options for people to pay their utility bills online without a fee, using kind of, using whatever payment option they would like. We have some that pay by credit card now, but I think a lot more would pay online if we didn't have that fee. So those are just a few options, or a few things that I'm, I'm looking at, and I think that now would be a good time to go out and see what other options are out there as well.
You know, and whether you engage us or another advisor to do something like that, it's always a best practice, you know, for the village to explore those things every once in a while, because these tech, as you know, technology changes so quickly, and you know, a service that a bank is providing today, they did provide five years ago, and would be able to offer it to you at maybe some minimal price and make your whole world more efficient. But you never know that that's out there unless either the bank comes and tells you about it and wants to sell it to you, or you do this RFP. The other thing is, if you don't talk to banks every once in a while, and ask them to, hey, this might be kind of expensive, you know, is there something you can do for us? If you never do an RFP like this, they're never going to come to you and say, oh, our costs went down a half, we'll pass it along to you. You know, so that's why you always want to kind of do things like this. If you go through this process, the only thing that, that I would highly recommend is that you keep an open mind in doing this, that, you know, to get, whatever is said and done at the end of the day might involve changing banks. And for a institution of your size, and Deb, I'm going to say this to you, if you change banks, it's not going to be easy. But in the long run, you will be better off for it. So all I'm saying is keep an open mind to the, to the prospect of we might, hey, you've had this banking relationship with this bank for 10 years, keep an open mind if you might, you might, you might be better off if you change.
Ken, question for you. A number of organizations that I work with have relationships with multiple banks. Is that something you recommend for municipalities?
Um, for the most part, no. And I'm not saying that, that the village is small or by any means, but you're not Madison, you're not Milwaukee, you're not Green Bay. Okay? So there's really no, there's really no need for you to have several banking relationships, maybe a couple. Hey, that's fine. And, you know, a main bank, and maybe another one that you, you have a couple accounts there, so people can walk into those banks or branches to pay their utility bills or pay their taxes, and it's essentially just an impository account for you. But no, I wouldn't, I recommend having several banking relationships around town. It's just, and your staff, hey, the more you do that, the more bank accounts, the more banks, that's just more bank accounts for your finance staff that have to reconcile and everything, so.
And will you ensure that our local banks are invited in the RFP process
Of course.
in Wisconsin?
I mean, we're going to come up with a list of, here's, here's possible respondents. You might say, well, hey, make sure you add this one, this one, this one, and this one. Okay, fine. Or take off this one, this one, and this one. And that's fine. It's just, we'll come up with that initial list and add or subtract anything that you suggest.
Would be banks and credit unions, credit union's part of that?
Well, I would suggest not a credit union. Because credit unions aren't in the business of offering accounts to institutions such as yourself, corporations and municipalities. They're just not set up for that. They're, they're more to handle individual
Incidental.
and, and personal accounts. You brought that up, Village of Fox Crossing up in the Fox River Valley, and we did an RFP for them, and there's a big credit union that just spent an ungodly amount of money building their headquarters in Fox Crossing, and our recommendation was, don't do your banking with them. You know, they just can't offer the service. And that was a pretty, pretty sore point, you know, with the village and the credit union. But hey, in the long run, they just could not offer the services that the village needed.
Same thing.
Yeah. Right? So that might be, and in a case where you say, okay, we will establish an account here so people can pay their utility bills, come into the branch and pay their utility bills. Hey, that's fine, but not, you know, for your banking. They, they won't be able to do it. I almost guarantee you, they won't be able to do all the things that Deb just talked about, electronic banking and all those other things. They just don't have the capacity to do those kind of things.
But we could ask them.
Certainly, you could ask them, but.
Ken, aren't there some regulatory, regulatory issues to?
Not necessarily.
Not with, I mean, with a credit union?
No, there is, I mean, they, they're not FDIC insured. They are, they are, I can't even remember what the name of the, the organization is, but it's, but it is a federal authority like the FDIC that ensures credit unions. So there's no statutory thing or, or risk factor, anything that would prevent you from doing business with a credit union. It's just that they won't be able to offer the, to do the things that you need them to do.
And what would you suggest a timeline would be for this project?
Typically, between the time that, that your staff says, okay, that's the, well, by the time your staff says, okay, that's the form of the RFP, send it out, that day to the day you actually make the decision, should be no more than a quarter. Because it usually takes about three or four weeks to get all the responses back. You want to give enough lead time. Because for a financial institution to put together a response to you, to answer all the questions, that takes an effort on their part. Okay? So you want to give them enough lead time, you know, at, at least three weeks to get the response together, you know, give us a little bit of time to, to get them back, to make that, to do that analysis, and then come back to you with a, you know, with a suggestion or recommendation.
And then how long in your experience does it take, let's say we do choose a different bank, how long does it take to implement that transfer?
Again, that depends on the size of the institution and the, and the services that you're going to get. But more often than not, it's, it's going to take a transition period of probably six months till you're completely off of the old bank and, and completely onto the new bank. You'd probably parallel bank for a couple of months at least, but that whole transition probably takes about six months.
Ken, is there, does Ellers have a contract then with the village for this, or is it just a?
It's part of our investment advisory agreement that, well, other services.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to approve a contract with Ellers to pursue RFP for banking services with costs up to $1,500, as spoken down in the panel.
I'll second that.
Motion second, is there a clear discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstained? Motion carries? Thanks, Ken.
Thank you very much. Sorry for the much app, and get that one down. Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, and we're going to go back on the agenda here, sorry, again, to item seven, unfinished business, discuss village board priorities. Matt, you could give a summary for all of this.
Yes, there's a spreadsheet that outlines how the results came, came back when everyone submitted their points. Pretty well spread out, but a fairly clear top, top five. And you guys may want to have further discussion on that, but certainly, moving forward, one of my suggestions would be to try to discuss, you know, at least the top three at the next handful of meetings, four or five, whatever we'd want to do, and try to further define the descriptions that everyone has submitted, and to try to narrow that down into actionable items that staff can work on that can further these priorities. And some of, some of these things are actually identified in various performance reviews, so I can refresh you guys on, on that as we move forward. So, so some of these things are already being worked on through performance reviews, but yeah, I don't know if there's any discussion you guys wanted to have, or?
I just wanted to add that I think it will also help as we kind of go through the budget process as well, to have kind of our goals and priorities set and established.
Mm-hmm. I think it'd be a good reminder, too, even in staff reports, as, as staff or a committee is recommending something, maybe they reference and say, you know, as a, as remind, you know, we're recommending this.
In relation?
And this is, yeah, and this is the number two objective by the, by the board for the process that we went through, just to kind of keep it as a living document moving forward.
Mm-hmm.
But there's no, there's no action or? But there's no, there's no action or anything that's necessary.
Ask if there's any comments or questions from...
It doesn't mean we're not going to work on some of these things, right? Like the emergency management plan, emergency committee can work on, comprehensive plan, Aaron's working on, right? I mean, it doesn't mean any of the current work we have going on.
Yeah, just because it might be lower on priority doesn't mean it's going to be chosen.
That might also be something that John touches on tonight when we talk about ordinance, because there are some ordinance items that don't make this list, but I think we'll make the ordinance list.
But I think it's more of something real significant comes up that's, say, not even on here at all, then whoever may be proposing that, then it's kind of useful then for the board to suggest that individual, you know, maybe let's shelve that idea until next, till next time around, just so we don't, you know, or we could add it in but take something else off the plate, you know, just so we're not getting...
It kind of helps too that we can kind of see what each other's focuses are.
Yeah.
Seems pretty well rounded.
Yeah, I thought it was interesting that there were two items that six trustees put any point value on, and then three more that, you know, majority of four trustees put points on. So I tried to look at it that way, too.
So we'll work on our top three to five.
Sure.
So we'll stay on...
At least to start.
Yeah, so I'll stay on here for what's going on. Item D then is discuss and consider approval of developer's agreement for KTW Enterprises LLC, Matt, unless this is in parentheses, Madison, Endo Company, Inc.
This is not intended to be living documents, this is intended to be executed, and a transaction will take place August 31st. For whatever reason, they wanted to have the developer agreement done ahead of time, which is, which is fine, which is fine with us. This is our, there are several types of developer agreements. This one is, is one where we promise to make payments to them over a period of time as long as they reach a certain incremental value.
There's no, no payments.
Or they wouldn't.
They just, they just have to build a 1.2 million dollar...
Okay, that's all right. I've got too many of these.
Slight reduction in land cost was the...
Was the incentive, yeah. So other than that, getting that wrong...
I was like, where is that?
Hope you have significant... I, I'm sorry, I just wrote something to someone, to another community on the different types of TIF agreements, so, but I didn't use this form. In the form itself, on page two, there is a village action report that summarizes what we did a few years ago was to make these significantly shorter by just making reference to decisions that were made at the architectural review committee, the plan commission, and the village board. Aaron does an excellent job of then compiling an action report which has all of the approvals and contingencies, or not contingencies, but all of the items that have been added, and that will be put in here as an exhibit. So I would ask that you approve the developer agreement that I have in your packet, not the one which I described.
Lee, we're going to include the date now, because it says dated, and it's blank spot for the date.
Yep, yep. And Heidi, you'd be pleased to know that the, the contract that you asked about last time actually has yield language that we will now be using in these contracts, so. Immediately, JJ was on the phone the next morning to boost that law, so it's all taken care of.
And so the village action report is, in this instance, is the one, like, with the sprinkler system like that?
It shows, it has everything that's been added on at the different committees.
Great. So in this particular case, what happens if the, the company does not reach the 1.2 million on or before specified date, then what happens?
There's a, we, we retain our right to buy back the property. That's what's, that's one of the items that's being waived, and then it says developer should not be responsible for any development guarantee payments, and so I get, you know, we'd have to look into whether we would want to restructure this or something. So those are the, this is, we do have ones where we use some of the TIF increment, and that gets paid to them. Here, it's not, but this still gives us the right to buy back the parcel, so it doesn't sit empty. And there's really, if I can anticipate your next question, there's really nothing else that we can really do to, because they're really not on, on the hook particularly, it's just the idea that are they going to buy, buy the property, build it partway, and then leave? And, you know, we've talked about as a staff whether we would use personal guarantees and just in these types of situations, we, we haven't.
Any questions for Lee?
In the event that they don't reach the 1.2 million and we decide to purchase the land back, who sets the price? I mean, do we have an arbitrator, someone coming in and hope for their success, but in the event?
It probably depends how much they miss the mark. If it's slightly, we could, we could potentially, we could pursue going after them on, is the difference between the, the market for the land price and what they bought it, what the reduction was?
John, we'll check to see, that, that may be in the covenants themselves, that, in terms of how the price is set, but...
That's a good question. Fortunately, it hasn't happened yet.
And the 1.2 million is based on their figures or our figures or...
What it's, depends on the assessment, it's based on the assessment.
But that, we figure that assessment is what it'll be once everything's built, like, that's how we came up with the 1.2?
We didn't, we didn't...
That's their...
They're guaranteeing that they'll build, that the property will be valued at 1.2 million.
They have to build it per the site plan, that was approved, which if they do that, they should hit it.
And that's, that's why we include the village action report that says, okay, these were the different approvals, and this is what, this is what you have to build.
It's usually very conservative, it usually comes in over that, especially because the village owns the land right now, so that's zero dollars, and the land's going to be worth more than that. And, and they're talking about just the building. So the property will be worth likely north of that.
Any other questions, comments? Do you want to consider a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the developer agreement for KTW Enterprises LLC, Madison Endo Plating Company Incorporated, second.
And our little caveat with the condition, appendix and everything attached.
And the other thing is that the K, the KTW was just added last week, but that is fairly standard in terms of they will have a separate entity that will own the real estate, and so that's what's, that's where that came from.
All right, any further questions or discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. All right, moving down to item eight B, discussing consider operator license permits, application licensing here from July 2019 through June 2020, for a whole list of folks, Allison Taj, Jade, Washburns, Miguel Chestnut, Jordan Haskin, Madison Esker, I'm probably glitching a few of these names, I apologize, Tricia O'Connell, Crystal Yelch, and Elizabeth Copens. Copens. Do you have any, any concerns with any of these folks?
No, no.
I'll make a motion that we, that we approve license applications for Allison, Jade, Miguel, Jordan, Madison, Tricia, Crystal, and Elizabeth.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second, down. Any discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. And then, I see it's discussing sound permit for Caitlin Gunderson at 301 Pether Drive.
So this looks like afternoon till 7:00 PM?
Yeah.
These two guitars and some laying for them.
I don't think we should be...
I'll make a motion to approve the sound permit for Caitlin Gunderson at 301 Pether Drive, August 10th, 2019.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Item D then is discussing consider block party application, Betsy Worth, 203, Elizabeth Lane, so we're going to get, buy the two different parties, guys.
But only two of you should go at the, at the same time, then you don't have...
No, just posted.
Oh, posted, right.
I'll make a motion that the block party application for Betsy Worth be approved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion is second, any further discussion?
I said one question on the permit in the packet, it doesn't have reviewed by the different departments. Does everyone get with that, all staff?
Yeah, I got all the emails back today, and they're all, they're all approved, didn't have any issues.
Okay, thanks.
It came in very late on Friday when we got this, so I knew I wouldn't have the emails back by then.
Good catch, John. All right, any other discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. All right, moving on then to village reports, your group.
I can give that since Troy's not yet.
Yeah, he's vacationing.
He's vacationing? Sounds lovely. So EMS met, it was a pretty quick meeting, probably the biggest highlight is that it is the chief's six-month performance review, so we'll be doing that at the next meeting in a closed session.
Moving on then to Parks Rec, your group.
So we talked with MG Soccer, who talks about the tree inventory, so I don't know, Sean, do you want to talk about the tree inventory at all, or jump me to it? Do you want to know what the packet? So the last tree inventory was in 2007, so we've added approximately 600 trees since then, and a new tree inventory would give us GPS coordinates for trees, which we could land into the GIS system, add a layer for that, so we could keep track of the type of tree, the diameter of the tree, tree maintenance, value of the tree.
Where to?
Right, exactly, the exact location of it, find it on that, pull it up with iPad, know what maintenance needs to be done. So that would be something you need to add on to the, to the tree inventory, a new feature we could have, to keep track of all of our village trees. And also, in the inventory, we would have Emerald Dash Four Plan of Action to take care of our ashtrays. Do you have anything else you want to add?
No, it's just something that, again, we have done since 2007. Actually, that number is a little bit lighter than what it really is, we're probably closer to 1,000 trees that we've added since 2007. It's just a tool for our forestry department to better manage what we have, and then also with EAB has really hit the village hard this year, and we really want to look at our plan again as to how we're going to attack, even if just basically the trees that the village owns. So it's kind of a, looking for kind of a commitment when it comes to budget time. This will be a, that 20,000 that's there is, would be the absolute maximum that we would be paying for that. I'm going to also, that's just from one company, and you saw the proposal in your, in your packet, but I'm going to seek other, other RFPs on that as well. And so it would be a 50-50 matching grant to the DNR, which I'm relatively confident that we're going to get because the village has not applied for a DNR grant in a long time, and I like Brian pretty well from the DNR, and he seems pretty confident that we would score pretty high with them. So village would be on the hook for a maximum of 20 up front, but then be reimbursed in 2024, half of it.
Sean, would this program ultimately be able to be one that we could continue to maintain and put information in?
Absolutely.
And update it?
Absolutely, that's because it's such a big job to catch up, and we don't, we're not really qualified or have the equipment to do GIS stuff. That, that's absolutely the goal, is that we can then, like, as Heidi mentioned, take an iPad, and when Humbert plants 100 trees, we just go out and zap them right there and report what kind and, you know, size, all that stuff. So in theory, we're not doing this again.
Okay.
Yeah.
It could help us keep track of our diversity of tree species as well, so then, you know, you don't know what kind of diseases trees could have in the future, so we could pull a report of where all the trees are that are that specific species, and, you know, kind of analyze what kind of impact that might have.
Just in the last five years, the village has planted a lot of honey locust trees, which are now being attacked by Japanese beetle, so we're kind of replacing those. So that type of thing is a great report to be able to turn out to know exactly where they're at, and how many we have, and how many we should look to be replacing.
And I'm assuming there's advantage to the forester, too, where he's going out and doing maintenance here, here, and here.
Absolutely.
That makes it more efficient.
Yeah. Right now, it's all kind of all records, we just kept the, in his files, so this would be something that JJ or any of us would be able to just access through layers on the GPS system and just be able to pull it up and say, yep, this tree, and this is what's been done, and...
So what you need from us tonight is authorization to apply for the grant?
Correct. And then there, there also is a resolution in there as well. Again, it's a, it's a commitment for budget time that the village is going to budget up to 20,000 with the caveat that we'll get 10, 10 of that back or half of that back.
Do you want, do you know when the grant comes back, or when it...
It's due October 1st, and we would know by probably the end of October, first part of November.
When you said 2024?
2020 for the work and also the GIS.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 201907 regarding authorizing the village to participate in the Wisconsin DNR grant, urban forestry grant, and urban forestry catastrophic storm grant program.
I second that.
And spend, so that would be, is it in the resolution to spend up to the $20,000? Yep. What's that part?
That's part of the budget process.
And we'll, we'll know, we'll get a response if we get it or not before we, before the budget's final, so...
Right.
Yeah.
And then we can change.
Any other discussion?
Can you reiterate the motion? So it doesn't include the 20,000 piece, right?
No, it was to approve the resolution, and if you wanted to add it into budget for it in 2020, is that here or something?
Yes.
And do we have a second?
Yeah.
Yep.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Any abstain? Motion carries. Law enforcement committee is the next one. We talked about traffic and safety radars, radar signs, sounds kind of scary, but anyway, those are the signs that you tell the speed when you're driving by, and flash if you're over the speed limit. So this was just a consideration for the chief to present... So this was just a consideration for the chief to present some costs around those signs to the committee. Committee did approve that, that we consider that for budget time. There are approximately three thousand per sign, and the thought was from the committee to maybe do a couple of them this next twenty twenty year and see how they work. They can also, a lot of them can be moved to different stationary signs, they're solar. There's a number of areas where the chief said that they definitely would do, do good to have there, and there's research that he has that indicates they do work. So it's something.
By underscore school?
Yeah, it says slowdown, yeah, we do have on both sides. But there are other locations he's considering, several locations, actually. So that was, then we talked about signage for the fourth, and everybody I think has seen the law product signs that you come in and tell them for that. We talked about considering for a grant with the DOT, Bureau of Transportation.
Or what?
The primary proposal for that is, there's a tough one that, I don't know if I'm using the correct term, but there's a computer in one of the squads, it's in dire repair, magic, computer magic, or whoever does our IT can no longer service at the atmosphere. And that was about thirty-six to thirty-seven hundred. So the other three or four hundred, you have to come up with a plan, whether that be training or some other piece of equipment.
Yeah, yeah, get up to the amount. So that's what we use it, thank you, John. Then the normal reports through, the chief went through. And then we had a little discussion about the budget consideration there, particularly around the training, and I think that, you know, the training, because we're running a bit over, we're tracking it to be over this year, so that's something we're gonna look at. Is there anything else?
No, got it.
I, just looking at the agenda, it says see attachment for costs for the traffic signs, but there is no attachment for the public to get, to have. So when these are posted, if there is like any attachments like that, if that can just be added?
We can post the packet, the complete package to the agenda if you'd like.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, it was in the packet, so, yeah, it's a good suggestion. All right, moving on then, ordinance review committee.
So we, ordinance review committee met for the first time in quite some time, so we talked about kind of a how we're going to prioritize, if we'd like to change ordinances, or should we change an ordinance, or a delegate, if it affects health and safety, if it's a legal risk, if there's some kind of economic impact, if it's more of an enrichment or a nuisance issue, so kind of look at our ordinances through those lenses to kind of see if we might recommend to change them. And we also then talked about an ordinance middle form, which is attached here, so that's more of a resident or someone else wants to have the ordinance reviewed. Then they would use this form, it could be available on the webpage, and it would give the committee some background information on why someone thinks it should be changed. So kind of between reviewing ordinances through the lens and then if someone brings an ordinance to our attention, we would have a background on that. So kind of our planned strategy for reviewing ordinances, kind of start to become more familiar with ordinances. So each of the members of the committee were assigned chapters to kind of start to review, so we can discuss if we think anything should be changed. So the one action item that we have from the committee is to approve the ordinance request form, that it could be posted on the website, so members of the public could bring an ordinance concern to our attention.
Of course, that's subject to my, waiving my copyright privilege, right? We, we did this when the ordinance committee was still going on, and the only person that ever filled one out is Alex. But it really, we hope that you'll do that if you're talking about an ordinance, because it gives us some idea of why you're doing this. It also asks the person making the proposal to do some of their own research. You know, and I think it just, it's, once you get into, once you do it a couple of times, I think you'll find that what appears to be a really simple task in terms of drafting some of these ordinances gets a little more complicated.
And so this is for the community to use, or for us as board as well?
Everybody, yeah.
And if we, if I know of some ordinances already that are out of date, do you want me to fill this out or just send them to you?
Fill it out.
Okay.
Some, some background information would be, I think, helpful for the committee to kind of...
All right.
So if there is an ordinance that would normally be covered by, I want to pick on somebody, but like a certain department or a certain, like, planning commission instead, but now it's going to ordinance review, does it then go to planning commission as well? Are we doing doubles of work? I don't, I don't think.
I thought we...
Go ahead, me.
I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought that ordinance review is gonna serve as kind of a melting pot, or at least for, you know, everything goes to ordinance review, and then an ordinance review thinks that, that they can take care of it fine, but if they say, well, that's, that's way too specific, or that's complicated enough where we need to get input from JJ or Sean, then it would be sent to the, to that committee, so we're not doubling up.
Or we can call on staff to attend the meetings or gather background information before we actually meet to see if it's, you know, what their advice or recommendation would be.
So why doesn't it just stay in that department's committee?
Because there's a lot of ordinances that don't apply to a certain committee.
Well, yeah, those can be done at ordinance review then, but if it's for a certain committee, why does staff have to attend another meeting?
They don't necessarily have to attend it, we can work with them during the day or during the week and take their emails or input and bring it to the meeting.
So then the people, though, that are on the committee that aren't the department head that have been on the committee for a while and know what's been going on, they don't get a say in the...
They can certainly attend the ordinance review committee. What, what we're finding is, I mean, you know, for the past year, there's like seven or eight that are like right here in the forefront. We're only budgeting currently for, I think, two or three to be updated a year, and the, and the longer this committee doesn't meet, in my opinion, is gonna, it's just gonna grow and grow and grow. I mean, there's a lot of these ordinances that I'm becoming very familiar with as I'm on this committee, that I have a lot of questions on right now as well. So I think, like, let's see if it's Public Works or Fire Commission. I've ventured to guess that some of the committee members probably haven't read the ordinances, so they're relying on, whether that's the chief or JJ or Sean, to bring it to their attention. And I think this group, in my understanding, is we're gonna be intimately familiar with all the ordinances and either invite these, these other heads or bring it up to the board's attention to see, you know, what do the board of trustees want to do with it? Do they want to keep it an ordinance or kick it over to one of these committees?
Melissa, when, I mean, I, I kind of got convinced that, that we need a central organizing unit, and I think that, like, if we sent one to JJ, we'd say, we'd like your input, and would you distribute this to your committee? And see if they have any input, and then have it come back that way. But at least then, there's always a track of where, where these things are, because sometimes they get started and then there wasn't any money, and, and so I, I'm not sure. It's not a perfect system, but it's at least the one we're trying to put in now.
I can understand that, and I would feel more comfortable if the ordinance did get sent to the committee that it was for, as long as it was a village committee, I think the joint committees, it is important to have the ordinance review look at those ordinances, because we can't really discuss our ordinances at a joint committee to review, so. Yeah, I think as, as we start to look at what sorts of questions we have in the next meeting, we might be able to have a better idea. Like, if we wanted to bring a list forward to the board to then discuss how we want to route it, or how that fits in prioritizing, I think it's kind of early to decide a specific route.
How many ordinances do we have, would you say?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one?
Is what I counted off, though, yeah.
So what if...
Fifty-one chapters.
Yeah.
So what if we made it some sort of help, decision tool or matrix or something that said, this, this ordinance, this is the group that's responsible for updating and reviewing it, and the ordinance committee would be the one to maybe make that matrix, and the ordinance committee might be the group that does some of those, and then some might be the law enforcement committee, some might be a different committee. So what if we did that with, when you guys are going through right now and reading them? If you were to think what committee would be lead on it? And then if that's the ordinance that needs to be reviewed, maybe it gets sent to that committee to be formally put on their agenda to talk through, and then kind of that's the owner of it, but the ordinance committee can kind of help usher it through those processes? That makes sense?
Sounds good to me.
Yeah, and while we're looking at all of those to kind of come up with, yeah, an owner or...
Right.
Department committee that's, that applies.
And maybe, I don't know if you would add it to this request form or add it to your decision process of when you're reviewing new ideas, when you decide, yes, let's pursue this, this would be the committee it would go to, that's probably more on the ordinance committee's side than the person completing this forms side, but... And maybe, I don't know, it doesn't make sense for, when you're going through that, to also think about at what frequency should each of these ordinances be reviewed so that we don't find ourselves in this conundrum?
Yes, in a perfect ordinance world, but...
We're not in a perfect world.
No, no, or, and we're not even in that solar system. Because our, isn't the ordinance amount something like six or seven thousand? And that takes into, that doesn't take into account any, any legal time. I mean, any time that I spend comes off of the, the legal budget. And, you know, we've got, I've got several of her memos from before that talk about how much it costs. I know that in two thousand and fifteen, we had like fifteen hundred left, and there were two or three ordinances that were supposed to be done, and that was gonna use up the whole budget. So it's, I, I think it's just a, it's a function really of, and it was interesting, the, on your prioritization, ordinances isn't, isn't very high, or I don't know if it appeared, but that's something I think that the board is gonna have to make a decision at budget time to say, look, this is a, a priority.
Do we have any risk, given that we know that we're not operating following some of our ordinances? Does that put us at risk, knowingly doing it opposite to what the ordinance says?
Uh, well, assuming that there are instances of where we aren't following what the ordinance says, I mean, we really, we, we have tried to identify those, and some of those, I, I know at least one of them is, is a joint committee. But I don't think that there's too many places where we're just, you know, not really following the ordinance, it's just a question of updating, because JJ or Sean will come and say, you know, we gotta do something about this. But again, it's just a matter, I mean, I, I think that that's part of the analysis, is what is our legal exposure?
And so when you're reviewing the ordinances, that you're also, I'm guessing, looking at what are we currently doing, and does it match? The one I'm thinking of is EMS, for example, the way it's written that we staffed that joint committee isn't how it's actually being done, so... That's just my one example of that, but it sounds like you guys are working through that.
And I think it would be nice to have a little bit of an idea of how many we're looking at as like a high priority or sent to committee before budget time, so people can think about it. Something really needs to be changed before we have a budget for next year.
So I was actually, I thought the committee did, I'm not trying to butter them up because I'm not going to every meeting, I heard, told them, yeah. But I thought they did a good job of trying to get a handle on what is a really big subject and a difficult subject, so.
So Sarah, was your recommendation changing something on the form that Heidi's asking us to approve?
I don't think so, it was, I think the form's fine, it was more on when the ordinance committee discusses it, decisions that they'll make. I think the form is good.
Well, would it be a problem to put maybe what, what department?
With that poll, under who is, who is affected by the proposal?
Well, the citizens filling this out too, they might not...
They may not know.
Know, you know, where it's supposed to go.
Not just citizens, sometimes a trustee.
Well, that would be different, but if this is a form for both, right?
Maybe we could just have a little line that said suggested committee? That would be something that, if they want to suggest one, but it leaves it so the ordinance committee can reassign if appropriate?
Yeah, that sounds good. Do you want a suggested committee or a suggested department? Because there's not, see, is there a committee for every department? There's not a treasury committee?
That's mad, and, well, there's finance personnel.
I don't know if it's too much, if, if we make the margins narrow bit or something, but if we put checkbox boxes in so that people even know what the committees are, they could just send check, oh, architect review versus somebody having to know what the committees are. But that could be too, too detailed.
Or...
I mean, we'd almost have to list the, I mean, a resident's not gonna know what committees we have.
Right.
Or, or who it would apply to, yeah.
I think it would probably just be action that the ordinance committee makes, they, they review the form and then they direct it somewhere.
Well, and right now, it's the committee's hamstrum because we didn't have a chair. And so that big election's coming up.
Don't be the last to show up at the meeting, you might be the chair.
Yeah, that's right.
You also get a key to it.
Oh, yes.
I don't, so then, once, once you guys do an ordinance, then it comes to the board for final, right?
And as we provide updates like Heidi just did, I mean, obviously Sean, JJ, the police department's not there, and someone might pick up on something, hey, did you think about this? Or let us take a look at it before the board votes on it.
I think the sheet is, the request form is the way it is right now.
I'll make a motion that we approve the request form laid out by the ordinance committee.
I'll second that.
Motion is second, any further discussion? Having heard none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed, any abstained, motion carries? The next item is the joint town, kind of through supervisors and village board members, we were all there, so the only thing I had out of this was the discussion of the front hall agreement. And because of the timing of that agreement and expiration of the end of the year, that I thought we should get that in front of all of us and just have a quick go at it as far as what is our next step. We've notified the town that we want to look at adjusting, either adjusting agreement or getting out of the agreement. The town that evening provided an option of revenue sharing plus expenses is an option for the town. We reviewed that, and that wasn't such a great deal, I don't think, when it comes to those big expenditures, like...
John, could I, could I just ask what that was, I mean, what the proposal was from the town?
The proposal is just joint, share of the revenue, but also share the expenses, and they provided a list of expenses in excess of what we're currently paying, and then some. And then they rattle off a few things that maybe had been done to the hall, like sanding floors and ECs. Now they're gonna do something in the back parking lot, so all those expenses were onto the town at this point.
We, we do pay expenses now.
So they have us down as only paying, that we paid the utilities.
Including?
The seventeen fifty, seven oh nine?
I would have to pull up.
That's there. But we just pay what's according to the contract, not additional, right?
No, we pay additional expenses.
Do we?
Very important.
I wonder if, to have you for the next meeting, could we pull our own records? Cause this was, you know, given to us from, and so maybe we can just pull the checks that we've written to Flynn Hall and just do a little-
Yeah, I'd make a motion to table this until we have that information.
Can I?
I'll happily give you a copy of what was presented at the meeting.
I'll second.
And we still should have time even next meeting.
Oh, sure.
All right, most should be at the table. Second, we need a discussion. Having heard none, all is favor. I may be opposed, abstain. Motion carries. Reports from village officers. There was a, mentioned something about changing the seating arrangement here to mingle with some other trustees. Just wanted to get the trustees' input on that. Any concerns, questions?
One thing that I was thinking about, cause I used to watch on YouTube and it was a little bit hard sometimes if you're watching on your phone on a small screen to see who was talking. So if you knew that everyone sat in the same order every time, then you would know who was talking just by like their body language a little bit. So that was my one concern about switching the seats, that maybe people watching might not be able to tell who's talking.
Any other questions?
Lisa, when you do the minutes from a meeting, if you're not here, and you do it from the YouTube recording, are, are you able to tell who's, well, you recognize the voices, I suppose, but I mean, is it, is it hard for you? Because I know what it's like, I mean, we've, when, it, it used to just be the, the tape machine. That was hard.
Yeah, and usually, I mean, it does help having the camera on a specific person. We had that one meeting where there was issues and they didn't have any visual, it was just the audio, so-
Tape machines.
Yeah, the tape machine. And it was more difficult by not having that, so.
I am fine with sitting in a different spot, like that doesn't matter. It's just as long, like, just moving once, not every meeting. Just consistency, I think is important. So.
Was there a concern brought up? Is that why this is coming up or was it just something that you came?
Uh, no, no concern, just to make sure we had it. Totally fine, that's how we have it. Just leaving.
Unless I can sit next to Lee.
No, I don't want, I don't want that to get started because everybody wants to and there's always hurt feelings.
I don't have a strong opinion either way.
And this is more of, I asked Lisa initially on this and just to your point earlier about whether or not it's a problem and you didn't have any. So again, it was just an opportunity to interact with somebody else.
And hopefully like the order actually helps maybe somebody watching, they, they know, hey, L is talking, so it's gotta be over here. I don't know. Or R is talking again.
So we're fine sleeping as is, nobody wants to move around or interact. All right, status quo as it goes. All right, uh, next thing was the update on name badges and gear. There's some sheets and stuff. Matt was kind enough to, or actually showing probably, was kind enough to pull up the prices on these. The name tags are just over twelve dollars and change for some of the name tag. And Melissa has an example. I mean, you guys got a sheet example.
That one's, that one's a little smaller, but the materials would be, yeah, the, the size that you have on the paper is about what it would be and the materials on that name badge would be what it would look like approximately.
Yeah, and you have a design in here as well. It's pretty nice.
And the, and the shirt, yeah, the shirts or, or the quarter zip would, they would have the Cottage Grove tree logo.
Yeah, so the quarter zip here, again, twenty-nine, you know, one more colors, polo nineteen fifty. And then larger sizes for the pullover, there's a two dollar extra charge, I guess.
You said the, it's twenty-nine for the quarters?
Twenty-nine for the quarter zip pullover.
Uh-huh.
And the polo, there's a lot of Ps in here, is nineteen fifty. And then obviously if we order a number of them, there may be a discount as well.
What's the letter, is the stitching, it's embroidered, right?
Yes.
So the stitching is that white? So if you're picking the color, you'd say, okay, let's-
It would, it would stitch accordingly.
Okay.
I think you need safety yellow.
This is where you write the bike.
Yeah, that's right.
And the shirts take about two to three weeks to get in and the name badges, do you know?
Less than a week.
Okay, name badge, we turn around quicker.
So the thing here is just to let either myself or Matt or Sean know if you're interested and then we can get an order in and, you know, certainly the name tags by the time marketplace rolls around for those that are going to stand in the booth. And the shirts come in great as well.
Okay.
Uh, no, the-
I mean, that's up to everyone individually, but we, they're, the, the budget can absorb, you know, a shirt for everybody.
I think it makes sense for everybody to get a name tag. Is it-
That was the plan.
Okay, so we don't need to tell if we want a name tag?
No, no, that's the plan.
All right. Just need to tell you if we want a shirt or a polo.
Quarter zip. All right. B, anything you have tonight?
Uh, yes, here's the first part of it and this is the second part of it, so please just take one. I, I've been involved in several instances in the last couple of months where there are questions that I've been dealing with involving the methodology that's used by a plan commission or a village board with regard to decision making. And while that is something that seems fairly straightforward, there are instances and there are times when you have to be particularly careful as a trustee to avoid any issues. So what I tried to do is to break this down by using an example and one of the examples, it was in the Wisconsin statutes in terms of granting a conditional use permit. Now, Aaron is excellent at identifying when, when you have a conditional use permit and what are the different standards that have to be used, but in the, the revisions that were, that were done this year in Act sixty-seven or at the end of last year, Act sixty-seven and Act nine forty-three, there was a specific section where the state has now taken, pretty much taken away the ability of a municipality in terms of how the municipality makes decisions with regard to conditional uses. And if you see on, if you look on page two, it says the new standard requires decisions whether to approve or disapprove a conditional use permit to be based on facts and information other than merely personal preferences or speculation directly pertaining to the requirements and conditions an applicant must meet to obtain a conditional use permit and that reasonable persons would accept in support of a conclusion. Now, as a lawyer, I read this and I think, oh, let's see, minimum five, ten lawsuits out of, out of that, trying to figure out what exactly it says, but I do think that what we have to start really paying attention to because the Supreme Court has definitely been targeting municipalities and the way municipalities make decisions. And so there are, I, I tried to come up with a list of items for you to think about when you're dealing not just with conditional use permits, but also with developer agreements or any kind of land use matter. First of all, and this I don't think has really ever been a problem, notice and opportunity to be heard. It hasn't really been a problem in our mind, but there are citizens that always seem to show up and say, well, we didn't get noticed. You know, we live four hundred and two feet from the site and we didn't get noticed. And, and so we, I think that we now, the village now has one of the furthest areas of notice of, of anybody. And that's a, that's a fine thing. The question really becomes in some ways, do people pay attention to that notice or not? Uh, so we're just, we're just assuming and hoping that they do. The second thing, but it's more important, and that is you need an impartial and unbiased decision maker. And this is an area of, that I, I want to emphasize, and that is it's my recommendation and my idea of best practice and our staff's idea of best practice that a decision maker doesn't have contacts with applicants or developers outside of the regular hearing process. Let me explain why. The idea is that if you're on the village board or you're on the plan commission and you get some information outside of the testimony, you say, well, gee, that, that really kind of sways me. Well, no one else has heard that. And so I think that to cover ourselves and yourself, it's best practice to, if, if you've got a question that you want answered, go to staff and say, this is the question that I have. Put it in writing. And I, I will tell you that in thirty-eight plus years of doing this, I have never once seen a staff person say, you know, let's just not tell them. Let's just not give them all the information. I think if anything, we probably go to the other extreme. So I think that you have to be very, very careful about making contact with applicants or with the developers outside of the regular hearing process. Now, you very well may get a developer calling you, how are you going to vote? What are you going to do? And I think that what I've done in some places is given little cards that they read from that you say, you know, this is currently under consideration by our board and we're certainly looking at, we'll take in all of the facts and we'll make a decision that we feel is in the best interest of the village or however you want to say it. But I don't think that, I don't recommend that you have a private conversation with the developer or, or the applicant. Because what has happened and it's, is at times someone says, well, wait a minute, I, I talked to, I talked to Jeff the other day and he said he thought it was a great idea. Now he's, what are you against it? What's that all about? And, you know, I mean, the thing is, we, I, we have no idea. Did Jeff talk to somebody or didn't, didn't he? So I think it's something to, I would strongly suggest that, that people follow that as a, as a rule. Another thing is that you cannot prejudge an application or, or request. Uh, there is a somewhat outdated legal municipalities film that we show every year, every two years, where the person getting elected says, well, I don't, you know, I wouldn't vote for this under any, in any way, shape or form, under any circumstances. And it's kind of like prejudging or making your mind up. And obviously, you know, remember, you're, you're like a judge and this is called, this is what's called a quasi judicial role of yours where the judge and as a, you know, as a young attorney, you forget this, you, you think the judge knows your case as well as you do. Well, the judge only knows what, what testimony you put on it. And that's how he or she makes, makes their decision. So. Another is differentiate between facts and opinions. And, and that one has kind of jumped out at me lately because there becomes kind of this war of questionnaires being filled out. And understand that those questionnaires are, they are opinion. They may or may not be something that, that you consider, but by the same token, you, you kind of question the relevancy sometimes of those. I mean, after the first meeting, you know, it's like we got the fact that people in Shady Grove did not like the, the development. But, but you know, you, we kept getting these things in and they get right into the record. But the question is whether they really become part of the record. And, and that's one of the things I want to just mention to you is that if a decision is made by the village board, it is, if it's appealed, it's appealed to circuit court on what's called a writ of certiorari. And what the judge gets is a notebook like this and it has all of the minutes and and if you really want to get the judge's attention, you send in a notebook with flowers on it like this. But that's how the judge makes his or her decision. You know, there is no testimony. The lawyers don't get involved at all. And, and so the judge is, well, based on the record, I don't understand how you came to this decision. And, and I've seen, I've seen that happen. I've won those, I've lost those, but by the same token, whenever you're involved in one of these decision making issues, you, you need to keep in mind, what is the record that I am creating? And so I, I say in here, create a record. The other is review and apply the law. There are, there are instances where there will be differences over the interpretation of law. If you get ten lawyers in the room and you say, what is today, you know, you might get eleven different answers. But I think that our staff does an excellent job of presenting the law to you. And Aaron's write-ups are far superior to any that I've seen in any other municipality that I've worked in because it's, it's in-depth. And if someone gets up at a hearing and says, I'm against this development, it doesn't meet our code. And I say, well, who, who are you? What, what is, what are your qualifications? I'm a police officer, I'm a mechanic, I'm whatever. Well, okay, you have an opinion, but you don't really have something that I necessarily want to rely on from an expert's point of view. And it did get, you know, heated with the person that was representing a lot of the Shady Grove people because I said, you know, what is the basis for you saying this? You know, you don't have the, the experience or the, a planner behind you. And it, and it wasn't being derogatory, it's just, it's like if I would give you a lecture on, on fixing a car, totally, that would just be worthless. And, and so you've got to see who it is that's talking. Is that someone that you want to include in the record? And is this, and then if you're saying, I think that Aaron's work, for example, or Lee's work is wrong and I base that on my legal Zoom research, well, okay, that's fine. But if you really want to be persuasive, you have to be able to cite the law and, and cite your expert testimony. Now, I know that this, sometimes it's kind of like, well, the lawyer- well, the lawyers are always looking to create a problem or think that there's a problem. But in Wanake, and if you read the, if you actually read the, not just the newspaper article I gave you, but that gives you a link to the lawsuit. It's pretty egregious, and it surprises me that it happened in Wanake. I, I know some of the people involved. And there are developers out there that will, that will sue. And, and so my comments tonight are directed to you in the sense of, let's prevent this from occurring. Here are the rules. This is what you should be doing. And we're not trying to cut off your sources of information. We're just trying to make sure that if somebody sues us, we are, we, it's completely defensible in terms of what we do. And I don't know how many of you have ever sat through a deposition or been deposed by a lawyer. As a lawyer, it is no fun at all. I was, I've been deposed a couple of times. And, you know, it's like, well, I'd like to say more, but you can't. I, you know, and, and I mean, the worst thing is to have a lawyer as a client because they're yada, 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 yada. And, but understand that you're under oath. And if someone says, did you make contact with the developer? Yes or no? Well, yes or no? And it's, it's just that, it's just that clear. So.
And this is, any individually can be named. Just, you know, it's not just the village. It's, it's individual, board members can be personally implicated.
Yeah, certain actions.
If you're going outside of the normal process.
Right. So I'm happy to answer questions. I'm not trying to scare anybody. But by the same token, I think we really have to be aware of the fact that the law, this is a new standard in the law. And I can see this being expanded to other parts of the law.
So to put in perspective, to perspective for myself, current, like right now, the school, for example, may be one that's coming up in the, in the near future. It would, per this, not be appropriate for us to have conversations with the school district about their building, their plans, anything outside of this, whatever testimony would come to either the plan commission or ourselves? Is that, would that be a realistic example?
That's a very realistic example. And I think that having conversations with the school district in terms of, you know, I think they already have their money. Okay, so now you're going to be, you're going to be hearing as either a plan commission member or as a board member about their plans. Personally, I think you're better off not talking to them because.
It's a conditional use as well.
Yeah, okay, okay, yeah. And as, and as a board, as a board member, what if you hear something or are told something, and, and you just think to yourself, there is no way I'm going to vote for this? But nobody else knows that.
And then, and then the other thing, if we use the school as an example, would be even if we don't like the way that the school is designed, just because we don't like it and our constituents may not like it, if it is developed and put forward to us following the rules, we have to approve it. I mean, we have to be impartial and unbiased.
Or have a really concrete reason as to, you know what I mean? You can't just.
But the concrete reason has to be based on fact, not personal preference. So can't just be, I don't like the army.
Yeah, and you see it sitting on the board. Opinions come up, and then all of a sudden it becomes facts. Sometimes it's clearly not.
In the world of social media, that is the single biggest change that I have seen in practicing municipal law, is the fact that there is kind of this outside channel of information that gets shared.
The other, the other change with this, correction from wrongly, but previously it was the, it was, the burden of proof on these was on the applicant to prove that, you know, they're not adversely impacting, you know, neighbors or, or the municipality. But now it's the municipality's burden to prove, you know, if there's denial, that the, the burden's on municipality to prove it, not on the applicant.
If, if you want a good read, if you go back to March and you look at Aaron's memo on possible changes to our ordinances based on these revisions in the state statutes. And what you're, what you're going to see overall is that the law is tilting heavily towards the developer. And, and for years, that wasn't the case. But now it's, and I'm not saying that's a good or a bad thing. It just is. And the Supreme Court, for example, has taken, has made several decisions in terms of our doing negotiations with large businesses or businesses that are, we want to come to the village. And the, the concept of confidentiality is very limited. You know, if I, if, if someone walks in, if Matt gives me something, that's attorney-client privilege. I can, I can keep that confidential. But if a developer walks in and hands Aaron a packet and says, now, I want you to keep this confidential, Aaron can't. I mean, if, if the developer's rival walks in right after him and says, I'd like a copy of those things. And I talked with several village administrators, other than, other than Matt. I was cheating, I was just asking. And I said, what happens if someone walks in with confidential information? And they push it to you? And he says, I just push it right back. And I just say, if you give it to me, and it becomes a public document. So you should, you know, you should keep that in mind.
And if for some reason we were to have some sort of interaction or discussion with the developer or an applicant, then the appropriate next step would be to recuse oneself from the vote?
I don't think you necessarily have to. I mean, I think if you, if you say, I ran into John DeWitt the other day. This actually happened. I ran into John DeWitt the other day and I'm out for dinner in Malfor, where he's actually from. And, and some of you may remember the fence along the cemetery. And John lectured me about how ridiculous our ordinances were. In fact, I just said, hey, John, you know, why don't you read the agreement? You said you'd put the fence in, and unless you can convince the board other way. And so then I reported that to the plan commission. I said, you know, had a little chat with Mr. DeWitt. And, you know, there wasn't anything sinister about it. I mean, he expressed his opinion. I said, I already knew it. And that, that can happen. I mean, Kato is a small place. And you are, you're going to have people come up to you and just say, hey, what are you going to do about multifamily? Or what are you going to, how are you going to vote on that? Or what are you going to do about this or that? And it, it goes against your political instinct, but from a, the instinct of being an elected official, try to stay away from it. And just say, you're right, we're, we're talking about it, and we'll be making our decision sometime in the near future.
Like the common example that you hear is an elected official make statements that there's no way I would ever approve a big box store or something like that. And then a big box store comes in and they, they meet the zoning, the comp plan, everything, and the person votes no or lobbies other people to vote no. And it doesn't get approved. And then they sue the municipality and the, and the individual because they, you know, went outside the scope of the position.
If, if you feel you have a conflict, please understand you can always call me and ask me. And I generally prefer to have you ask me, not just before the meeting, but, you know, so that we can kind of think through the issue. I will always give you an answer on that. And if I'm in a conflict situation, then I, I have people that I can call that, that would give an opinion. But if you think you have a conflict, please let us know, and, and we'll deal with it. I, I'd like to think that our board will avoid those if at all possible, but I don't think I'm doing my job if I don't say, here's some, here's some traps out there, here's some things that can happen.
So where, where do you see like neighborhood meetings or public hearings fitting into that? Is that just on the developer to change the way a road goes through trees to, to ruffle people's feathers? Or like, how does?
I think that, like, for, for example, with, with that discussion, that's what the whole neighborhood meeting is about. But if I'm a trustee, I suggest kind of sitting there listening and saying, I'm, I'm here to listen and to take in information. When you start getting into the decision-making process, then, you know, that's, that's when, and there's no, no reason that you can't ask questions at the, as long as it's not just you engaging the, the developer to the exclusion of other people.
Or try and sway.
Yeah.
Public opinion.
So I offer this for your consideration. And if you don't agree, I'm, I'm certainly happy to discuss it with you. But I think that best practice would be to follow these general rules.
So would you say that the neighborhood hearing or a public hearing is for the developer to hear the feedbacks that they could make changes? And then, but, and the role of the board, though, is to judge, to use your words, to judge if the development that's being brought forward meets our comprehensive plan, meets our other ordinances we've put in place, and not necessarily the feedback from?
I think that the, I think going to those and listening to those, there's not any issue at all. But, but you, if you say, well, you know, that kind of convinces me, I'm against this development, but, but why? You know, is there something in there that, that you can actually say they're not doing? Remember that these hearings are for, there's a lot of money and time at stake in these things. And while I, I think that you, I, you want to hear what the citizens have to say, I also want to hear what the developer has to say.
And the decision can only be made based on what was actually presented at the formal hearing, not the neighborhood meeting or other things. So it's, it's only what was, you know, what's in the staff reports, what's submitted by the, by the applicant, and, you know, any other testimony or evidence that's submitted.
And I've seen developers tape those meetings of, with the public, saying, I offer this in, you know, I, I offer this for the, in support or in opposition. And then the board, as is the case in, with many bits of evidence, they have to weigh, how much weight are you going to give to that? So it's, it's complicated, but by the same token, I think these general rules are, are useful. And most developers, I mean, I talked to one developer who said, well, I didn't really know what to do because people were contacting me. And I, I thought, I didn't want to play coy with them. I, I tried to answer their questions, but he said I was uncomfortable with, with, with doing that. So.
Any other questions for you?
Thanks, Lee.
Yep.
All right, item 11, communication mustn't be as business. Consider approval vouchers as. Any questions? I had a couple of questions for, for anybody else trying to. Setup of the new phone system for village halls, does that allow us now, once it's in place, to throw calls back and forth between here and this building?
It does, yep.
Okay, cool. I knew that was common, so that's good. That's exciting. And then, this might be a question for JJ. Line-in install epoxy chimney seals.
Yeah.
What is that? I'm just curious.
That is sealing up the chimney's top portion of the sanitary system manholes. And it's mostly done this year, basically they epoxy in there. There's gaps are coming in, and that's where we get stormwater infiltrating into the sanitary that we pay for to get treated. So we're going to try and shut those out.
Okay.
Same thing, taking, doing less televising and more of this work to address those issues every year.
So, so will there be more?
That's it for the year.
Okay.
Likely 40 manholes. We got the chimney seals.
Okay.
That's the woven done in my back here.
JJ, can I ask, what's a chimney on a manhole?
Top.
Whoa, okay. All right, I deserved that, thanks.
I don't think they just call it a top. Does it sound similar?
Well, it's the top portion of. Basically, you buy one big chunk that's solid, you know, typically you should know it for a long time. Then as you fit the manhole to meet level of the street, when it's developed or when the project is done, they use rings, and they're sealed up or grounded at first, but those are areas where they deteriorate pretty quickly depending on what's done initially. So this is really nice way to seal that up.
Good answer. You know your stuff.
Or the top.
Right.
Really. Those are the only ones I have. Any other questions for, on the vouchers or reserve?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers attached in the paper.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Having written down all those in favor?
Right.
Anybody opposed to missing? Who's curious? Correspondents?
I think we got an email, I did.
Yeah.
It looked like it was against everyone.
Just before this meeting.
Yeah, right before the meeting about someone who had TDS concerns about their mom. He was going to contact TDS, but then he was going to write back to us if he didn't get a satisfactory response. I know we're kind of, I don't know what we can do, is there?
Yeah, and I think John, John said in on that meeting would be when we talked to TDS back when. And I've written a couple of memos on it. Our hands are very tied in terms of what we can do.
As long as they're following, though.
Right.
The permit.
Yeah.
I think JJ.
This, yep. This individual, I started the email, but then I called Matt. He left a message a little bit earlier. He still sent the email, I was not aware of the time. But it's going all of you too. Basically, he didn't know about the complaint line. So I just explained a little message. They'll typically back you with timeline when they're going to restore. I just told him to follow up with me if they don't, which is, it's pretty standard stuff. Most of the votes don't email all of you, but this is kind of a typical one.
And on TDS, that pedestal was replaced with those up to date. So Forest and Drive should be completed now.
Any indication of firing up their services early?
They still have quite a bit of work to do.
Do you really?
I would say, the last time I talked with them about when they'd be done being a problem for me, was they were saying it would be left for this year. So I imagine there's going to be some time after that with their pull wires and actual firework on the board.
All right. Upcoming community events.
Yes, John and I were, we have a booth reserved or, you know, a little tent. We're going to promote things like the census, Polco. Lisa's going to do some voter registration there. The PD was going to have some giveaway items. And we'll have Parks and Rec registration, registration forums and programs to promote. So just all, all sorts of various, various things. We'll probably have some, probably should have some candy so it'll be popular to hand out to everybody.
Do a little karaoke?
John, can you do your, John, can you do your Lions Club stomach painting? Yeah.
I think you're going to need a bigger tent with all that stuff going on under there.
So it runs from 9:00 AM until 2:00 on the, on the 20th. And so if anyone wants to stop in and help out, that'd be, that'd be great.
Hopefully the weather's going to be cooler than last year.
Well, that was hot.
Yeah.
There'll be kindness rocks at the Optimist Club tent.
Oh, yeah.
And painting of the Free Little Library. So then, also July 9th, next Tuesday, is the Mallards Event for the Miracle League. So I just want to remind anyone. So I just want to remind anyone if they want to buy tickets for July 9th game. For the Marketplace Days, is the Village going to send out a Facebook post about that? That will be there?
Yeah.
Is that real? Okay. Great.
Paul is all over that.
But I meant from the...
Yeah, no, but I mean, she's been encouraging that as well.
Oh, okay, good.
We're hoping that construction will be in good shape. It's not going to be done in good shape. Other upcoming community events, anybody else have any? All right, future agenda items.
Line call.
Yeah.
Just with line hall, though, the contract reads, if we don't give them six months' notice, we automatically go into a five-year agreement.
We already gave them.
So we told them we're out.
Yeah. We gave them six months... We motioned last time, is what I wrote in my motion, to give them six months' notice.
John and we, John and Lee and I talked about whether, you know, that he needed a letter in addition, and I don't know if you sent him one or not, but...
He sent an email.
Yeah.
He sent a ballot.
Yeah, okay.
That was last week.
But that's a good point.
And that we can talk about it tonight, but this is it, so...
The borrowing, what we can finalize for the road construction on BB, and then I think we'll have an update, Lisa will have...
That may have to go to the next meeting.
Oh, okay, that's fine. A social media report, activity on our various Facebook pages, that sort of thing.
And should we review our investment policy per Ken's suggestion?
Yes, I would, we can do that in conjunction with the budget process, so when the finance committee's meeting to review the budget, that could be an additional agenda item.
So it doesn't have to be in for next time?
I don't think so.
Is there a reason why we waited six years to do it instead of three? Does it cost something?
This was the... I mean, I would probably just ask him for any suggested revisions, and we would consider those. Only answer after that is, he didn't, he never suggested changing it. We updated it in 2013, and so it's pretty basic. I'll get you guys all a copy of it. I don't think there's... We're very limited what we can do with investments. We, the state statute, we basically just follow what the statute says, so in my opinion, there's not really much to update, so...
So we have the priority list, like refining those descriptions? I don't know. I mean, is there a way we do that together in a meeting, or do we propose something? Or how? I don't know if we talk about that at the meeting.
Sure. I was going to, you know, we could try to tackle the first two or three of them, and I can let you guys know within those categories the things the staff's already doing, and you know, things that are already, you know, goals in people's individual reviews, and then, you know, you all can discuss if there's any other specifics on actionable items that we can do. Some of them might have to be considered during budget time, but just ways that we can make sure we're actually accomplishing or furthering that priority. Yeah.
All right, anything else? All right, then we'll move on to item 12, Village House Grove will enter into closed session pursuant to the Wisconsin State Statute 1985, Part 31, Part 3E, liberating or negotiating purchase of public properties, investment of funds, or conducting other specific public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Closed session is for negotiations in the Commerce Department, number five. I want a rule call. I'll make a motion for that. And then I'll have a second. Yep, and then we can have a rule call.
Rex.
Aye.
Alan.
Lindberg.
Aye.
Murphy.
Aye.
Valencia.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Russell.
Aye.
All right, in closed session.
Time to get the tickets.